Cut it all already. It was a dust bowl. He drove down the interstate.
You guys all ready?
Yeah.
Diane, everybody over there ready?
I'm sorry.
I know. They've got a lot going on.
Ruby, you guys all ready?
Yes.
Yep.
I'm waiting for the exact second.
Let me get my.
All right, folks, we got a lot on the agenda tonight. We're gonna go ahead and get our work session started. We always start with a review of the council meeting agenda. Pardon me. We have all the normal things at the beginning. We normally do our executive sessions at the end of the meeting, but Councilman Schmidt had asked that we do this one at the front. So right after we go into session, we'll move out to an executive session. When we get that done, we'll come back in. The first item on the agenda is 24-059, which is our second look at and potentially approval of a rezoning of 200, 200.8 acres. Mike, you want to talk to us about that?
Sure. Mayor and council, of course, you heard about this last month. This is 200 acres on the north side of Hutchinson Ferry Road between, generally between Vernon Grove and Rico Road. The proposal is to rezone the 200.8 acres from RL to HMMU, mixed use hamlet. The plan that was submitted with the application includes only 26 lots on the 200 acres. So the remaining development rights would be reserved to apply somewhere else in, in the hamlet. The property is surrounded by mostly, I'm sorry, agricultural and single-family residential property, some, some large lot property. And if it's approved, it'll result in, the addition of 200 acres will result in an additional 140 acres being protected as open space or civic space. And the plan again for this property is that each of the 26 homes would be on a single acre developable parcel surrounded by a several acre parcel of open space, which the same, same entity, same person would, would also own. There are two entrances proposed along Hutchinson Ferry Road. And that's, for now, this is public hearings, so we'll be hearing from, from people on this. There was some communication about the last of the conditions about the trail from the applicant that I believe you all saw, and I do have, if you're interested, an alternative version of 13 that, that presents it the way the applicant says the neighbors are comfortable with. I'm hoping that neighbor also will be here this evening for the hearing.
Do you have any questions for Mike?
Discuss now? Discussing it.
The microphone.
We're discussing this during the hearing.
I'm sorry.
We'll be discussing this later during the hearing.
Well, so this is the time for the work session. If you want to have work session discussion, you will be discussing it, of course, after the public hearing in your normal deliberation.
What was the condition?
You were mentioned.
Oh, the.
It was about cows and.
Yes, exactly. The last of the conditions having to do with the nature trail.
Uh huh.
In the, the original version proposed to the, the planning commission, actually, I think that language is in the, in the minutes from the planning commission meeting. But the planning commission actually, after hearing from the neighbors, asked to have that changed and have the trail routed outside of the buffer entirely. Partially or largely because the neighbor, one neighbor to the east concerned about the, the cattle on that property and potential danger if people on the trail got too close to that fence and caused some disturbance among the animals. So we heard from the applicant saying they had a discussion with the neighbor who is okay with just a hundred foot separation. And that's what, again, if you're interested, this other language reflects, again, what they, I think they sent out to everybody.
So a hundred foot separation, does that still run it through, that still runs it through the?
So the last 50 feet of that would be within the buffer. That's right.
I don't really know, maybe. So the cat, they're on, they have a fence because I kind of looked at it from the road. I didn't go too far back, but it looked like. So you have cows and then non-farming neighbors. I'm just looking at it like there's a cattle risk apparently that they feel like there's a cattle risk of some sort on the opposite side of the fence.
Right, right, right.
So do they just need, is it just like a maintenance type of issue? They just got to make sure the fence is maintained and then it should be okay?
Right.
Or am I, do I not see the, like, the risk?
So, right, I'm hoping, of course, staff didn't originally recommend, you know, a, a condition staying away from the cattle. The property owner, the neighboring property owner told a couple of stories of a couple of situations with their own cattle where bulls, I think, in both cases, where some he in one case, and I think somebody else were, were in danger. And they're concerned about people who are not used to being around the animals causing, causing them to get excited. And I don't know actually, but maybe coming through the fence. I'm actually not sure.
Mike, and for me, I'll say one thing that they, they were concerned about is evidently there's been a law passed. And I think what it amounts to is that this construction was going on and the neighbors were complaining, basically, be quiet, you move, but you move by a farm. So you can't complain about the cow smell or whatever. And that was some of what Mr. Ferdinand was speaking about, like, you know, I don't want to hear nothing on this because this is the way the law reads.
So that was. I think the law is written to protect him, but he is absolutely worried about that. I mean, it's a common story, right? People move into, next to a farm and then they complain about the farm. Well, they're the newcomers. The law is intended to protect the farm.
It's the story of Milton here all the time is why this kind of zoning with buffers is so important. I mean, it seems appropriate to me, and if they're all happy with it, it's fine. Any, anything else anybody has? The next one.
Wait.
I think we do. Did you have a question? Enough for this. We'll wait.
I, I. I had a couple of questions, starting, starting with the question of the relationship between the, the planned 26 acres the 174 building rights that naturally implicates, that are naturally implicated in this. They don't just go away. I feel like they need some discussion. So could you speak to those for a little bit?
So they haven't submitted a plan for the use of those, and until they do, they can't be applied. We have the concept plan preliminary plat development process. So.
Before they could be used anywhere.
Before they can be used anywhere. Right, right. So you all will have to approve a concept plan. If they tried to apply them in an incremental densification in an existing concept plan, that it would show on the preliminary plat, which have to be approved by the planning commission. If they feel like it's too much, right, too much of a change from the concept plan, then they send it back to you for, for.
As, as that kind of density has been moved around, is it, I'm thinking of like the Mado, excuse me, the Mado name came to mind. And I think, I think the applicant said that these go to overlook and Spella neighborhoods. And we have concept plans for that, right?
Right, that's right. So yes, concept plan for all of Spella preliminary plat approved, except for, if you're familiar with the concept plan, there's another kind of circle down by Shell Road at the far end. That part was not approved in that preliminary plat. They just didn't have the development rights at the time. But yes, there's a concept plan approved for all of that, including most of, or including all of Spella and preliminary plat of almost all of Spella.
So some of these development rights might be going to that section that's not already approved, right? Because they didn't have rights at the time, but that would have to come back in.
That's right. That would be, that's right. And they would, exactly. They have to come back and get planning commission approval on that. And if the planning commission thought it was too different than what was shown in the concept plan, again, it would, it would have to come to you.
Can you speak to the history of like how that worked, for example, in the Mado neighborhood? Where, you know, that's growing significantly more dense and has rights to make it far more dense. Can you just speak to sort of how that plays out in terms of like the infrastructural issue? You know, when we're talking about density, we're talking about infrastructure.
Right.
They had a change come back through here once before.
Right.
The.
Yeah.
If it's. Question goes to the idea, again, I'm just trying throughout this. The 26 doesn't, you know, we, we need, 174 is warranted as a thing to explore, given the implications of that for an already dense development. So I'm just trying, I was trying to understand it. I'd never, you know, everybody's heard me say Serenby great. And, and I never really looked at it really closely. And then I started really digging in on the thought of where, how does that density move around? And so can you just explain to us, like, maybe some of the, like, what's the history of Mado and how that density?
Right. So it went through that same process. Now, I'm trying to remember when, I think it was after 2015, which is when we, we ended up with that three step process, but it went through that same, that same process. The concept plan for Mado was not approved by the city. That was approved under the county. And then when they went to plat it, I don't, I don't remember the year. Again, it was 2015 when we came up with that, that three step process. When they went to a plat it, it would have gone to planning commission for approval. Now, I'm talking a little out of my hat here. I didn't review the history, but that's the process now anyway. So the preliminary plat would be looked at by the planning commission. They would compare it with what they see in the comp plan. If they see it as sufficiently, conceptually the same, they'll approve the preliminary plat. If not, if they see it as too different, again, it would go back for a concept plan amendment. You've seen some concept plan amendments come in.
That, that one did come through us. That one kicked from the planning commission of the, of the council. Again, I don't remember what year that was either, but.
In Mado?
I remember having conversation about it. This was a fairly significant change to, you know, to the point, right? Like if, if it's significant enough that it needs review.
Right. Well, and, and you've mentioned review. And how, how does? How does the density of the housing get reflected in changes in, for example, roads, access, fire control, water sewer, like? And I'm, and I'm thinking, maybe, maybe one, a way to start this or to clarify why I'm asking is because I'm looking at this piece with 200 acres, 26 houses and, and having looked at the other, at other acquisitions by Serenby, I'm wondering what are the future potentials for this piece? What, what?
Sorry, you're thinking about potential additional density on the 200 acres we're talking about now?
Well, just, you know, we're talking about density. We're talking about these, you know, this, is there, is there no plan to ever do anything beyond 26 homes on this site?
Not, not on that, not on that property. Now, if they change their mind, they get maybe a part of the way through it. It's not sailing. They would have to come back. I mean, I would probably, you know, if they brought me a plat that had 27 lots on it or 28, and they were in basically the same place. I mean, I think that, well, it still has to go to planning commission, right? That would probably be conceptually the same. More would be probably a, a change, a conceptual change. So yeah, if they decided, yeah, let's put 200 units in here, they have infrastructure issues they'd have to deal with then as well. But those, that would absolutely have to come back to, or 100, or 50, or whatever, 40, right, would clearly have to come back.
Okay. But does Serenby own any other property or have an interest in any other property adjacent to that?
Adjacent to it? I don't, I don't know, but I don't, not that I know of. I'll put it that way. Adjacent to it. They do own other property that has not been rezoned in the, you know, adjacent to Serenby somewhere, I think on the east side anyway. I don't know of any in that area that they own. They tend to. Recently, oh, oh, we, oh, we have, we have the applicant here who can answer those questions. The recently, when they've been acquiring property, it's been coming in pretty quickly, I believe. But it's a good question for the applicant.
Can I ask the applicant?
Of course you can.
We don't own any additional property on Hutchinson Ferry. The additional, any additional property that we own that's not entitled, it's one public tax record. You can pull up and look.
I'm asking. So like, what I'm thinking.
There's a parcel on Atlanta Noonan Road across from the entrance to Selborn, and then some additional land in Coweta County. So there's no additional land around this 200 acre parcel that we own.
Nothing in any other interest there. I'm, I'm just asking because.
If you want to ask me a direct question, I'm happy to answer it. I can't tell what you're, we do not, we don't have any interest or own any other property around this 200 acre parcel.
Okay. So the, so this parcel is like a stub that'll never become, say, a bridge to another piece of property.
I think maybe the question you're asking is Harrison Merrill, Fox Hall owns the property that is adjacent to this. There's no.
I don't know them all.
But there's not, like, we don't. We bought this property from Minerva. So the Remsta family and Minerva are kind of one in the same. Remsta family is on the tax parcel. Minerva is the active developer for them. When Minerva called us and said, we're going to put 400 acres on the market, it was two 200 acre parcels. One is the H farmettes that we brought through entitlement. This is now the G farmettes. We, we Serenby didn't want to see dense development happening on those two parcels around us on Hutchinson Ferry. So acquired them with this thought process of this lower density development of these 26 to then move development, higher density into a Spella or our fifth phase. And we have no economic interest or joint ventures or partnerships with any other landowners that are around us.
Okay. So it's unlikely to become a bridge to another piece of land, like. I'm just thinking of future development because of that floating, something about that floating 174.
Oh, I mean, we could tell you, what, what's interesting for you to think about is that floating 174 exists almost anywhere in Chat Hills. So with the theory of how development rights work and TDRs, if you own 50 acres, you Scott could go purchase 45 development rights from someone, and you have a floating 45 development rights that you own that you could then go land into 200 acres that you purchase. So one way to think about development rights in the city is currently all development rights are floating until they land. Us entitling these 174, to Mike's point, we can't just go land them somewhere without coming through a full process of showing the city where we intend to land them. What this does in fact do is puts all of the 174 acres into a conservation easement. So if you start to think about, you all are wonderful. What we fear is 15 to 16 years from now, a city council who changes the entire zoning and throws the 30/70 out, and a typical developer could come and mass grade 80 to 90% of this. So us pulling this forward and entitling it in this way and requiring conservation easements on it guarantees that 20 and 30 and 40 years from now, my children will have green space protections, at least on this section of Hutchinson Ferry. And that's what we are most concerned about is at least the land around us that we can think about getting into permanent conservation easements so that the totality of Chat Hill zoning is upheld. And that 20 years from now, we're not fighting a city council to say, this is why this matters. This is why green space matters, and this is why conservation easements matter, and this is why the 30/70 matters.
How big is Serenby now?
Serenby is approximately 2,000 acres. So a small fraction of the city, when you think about the city being about 40,000 acres.
And what's the population?
We have approximately 1,100 people. And we serve as approximately 70% of the city's tax base.
Can?
Go ahead.
You know, how big, I know you say 2,000 acres. How many acres in the hamlet right now?
Entitled, I have to pull that exact number, but I think we're probably, we have entitled approximately like 1,000, 1,200.
So. I mean, there's a gap there. I'm saying, so if we go from, we'd be going from 1,200 to 1,400 is what you're saying. Give or take.
That's right. I can get the exact numbers by the.
Okay. Well, I'm just trying to be in the ballpark.
Yeah, yeah.
Just, you know, I spend a lot of time talking to a lot of people in Serenby also, and some on Hutchinson Ferry, and they have a big concern about us crossing the road. And in my conversations, understand a lot of people have a first right of refusal, guys do on a lot of people's property. If they were to go sell it or something.
First right of refusal?
Is that true? That's what I've heard. Some residency, I guess you've approached them to purchase their property and said, hey, can we get a first right of refusal if you want to sell it or something?
We have not.
Okay, you have not. Either way, my biggest concern is with the hamlet size. There are no restrictions on a hamlet size. And I know what a lot of people say when they look at the maps, this does look like we're just going to do a continuous crawl across the city. And, and also, you know, we talk about preservation and last I, I was told we're still at 113 acres in preservation. So if we're floating at around 1,200 acres, you know, I do the math. I mean, there's, we need to play catch up somewhere, don't we?
Yeah, I think this kind of comes back to the continual, there are two things. When we pull some, a plan forward, there is, we can't touch. So you have two different preserve numbers. You have land that we have to guarantee is permanently protected, and that's covered in a, in an approved plat. And then there is a timeline for when a conservation easement is put on. The conservation easement is more about protecting landowners from a city council 30 years from now that changes the zoning. So as long as the zoning doesn't change, all of the green space is protected at the time that a plat is approved. The conservation easement, again, protects neighbors from a city council that were to change the zoning. So it's protecting the neighborhood.
And I understand all that. What I don't understand is why it takes so long to get this land in preservation. It seems like we continue to chase it. So if you can map out a portion of it upfront, as you say, why can't we go ahead and put that in permanent conservation?
Oh, if I may, for this particular application, all those donuts around the developable lots are required by, by proposed condition, right? If it's, if it's approved with the conditions, those would be preserved by the time of the, the building permit. So this particular, it's not the same in the, in most of Serenby, but in this particular, just like we did with the last couple of, of these, with, that had the kind of donuts of open space, the F lots, the A lot.
Yep.
And these G lots are, are unique within Serenby, but in these, in particular, those open space parcels have to be preserved upfront with conservation easement. So as those happen, that'll happen early on the process in the, again, these, it's probably what, about 500 acres of the, of the overall, something like that.
And we currently have about 300 acres that we're working to put conservation easements on that we're in conversation with the city around the baseline document requirements. So that is, that's fully in process of additional land, to your point.
Yeah, it just seems like we always chase preservation. I mean, you guys are cutting down more trees than anybody. And I would assume that, you know, it just seems like a simple math equation to me.
Yeah.
Seems like a very simple math equation. And, and over the years, you know, the last time we got some land in conservation, you know, the council pretty much said, listen, we're not going to annex any more land until you put land in conservation. And I remember I had a conversation with Doug Cloud. He was very clear. He said, the process takes, you know, 90, 100 days. It's not that big of a deal once you mark out the land. So.
Do you want to share with everybody that you're actively talking to, like where we are?
Right. Yeah, I've, I had a conversation with Alfie, I was going to say Alfie Cone, Alfie Vick, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago about baseline documentation process. So it's, it's, it's a different, Doug Cloud was involved last time with them. Doug's not working on them this time. Alfie Vick did the baseline documentation last time, right? We talked about, we talked about the standards for that. And so he is actively going out and doing the baseline surveys and preparing those documents. We were concerned or wanted to make sure we understood what we were going to be getting on the small lots in particular compared to what we get on the, on the larger, you know, we're talking about kind of choosing the, the small lots is like what's proposed here, right? And in the F lots and the H lots, the little donuts around the, around the houses. The bigger ones were a different situation. So yes, they're actively doing it. I've seen the map of what they propose. I've talked with the guy who's doing the baseline documentation. We've worked on drafts of the, the, the current version of the easement. So I know they're in process. I don't know what the date would be for, when it all come in, but I know that they're, they're actively, actively working on that.
And, and again, to Garnie's point before, if we've got 1,400 acres zoned as hamlet right now, we have 1,000 acres that are protected. We just don't have easements on all of it. That's, that's just a fact.
Yeah. And then I would say to the point of, like Hutchinson Ferry and anybody who would be concerned, we would hope that there is some ability to see that with a 200 acre parcel, you could have an independent home builder bringing forward a hamlet plan with zero variances, with the right to entitle a 200 unit hamlet on 30% with 70% green space, putting 200 homes on this portion of Hutchinson Ferry versus the 26.
How would that happen with our current zone?
How would it happen?
They just apply? That's just like.
Correct, correct.
So what's the difference between them and you?
Well, the difference between them and us is we're bringing 26, this is 26 versus 200 on this section of Hutchinson Ferry. So this plan is putting much less cars and use on this section of Hutchinson Ferry than the zoning currently allows someone to do by bringing forward a 200 home plan. We by right have the ability right now to put before the council a 200 unit plan on this property, and we are not doing that. We're putting a 26 unit, but by right, someone has the ability to bring forward a 200 unit plan on this, on this property.
Well, let's, regarding the property itself, the 20, the 26 and the crossing of Hutchinson Ferry Road there, how's, how is that going to affect traffic on the, you know, the, we've all driven that. I, I've driven it several times lately and I went and walked the property. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a notably fast curve. You're coming out right by, right across from the, the drive that comes up on the south side.
Correct.
Right. And so what are the implications for the, that intersection in us, in our scenic byway there? And what, and what can you say about traffic?
So with 26 units, you're, you're looking at pretty low traffic, like implications. And from a, in the scenic byway, it would be similar to what's across the street. So you have a stop sign. All of the buffers have to be in, in place. So it's a gravel road with a stop sign is what's going to be visible on Hutchinson Ferry. So the scenic byway buffers are in place. From a traffic standpoint, it's no more than what the existing farmettes have put, will have put onto a Hutchinson Ferry or Watkins Road, and 26 homes is pretty negligible when you're looking at overall traffic studies. So again, it's lower than what, what could, what certainly could be.
But with regard to traffic study, I heard you at the planning and zoning meeting when y'all went over this. Can you speak to Serenby's traffic study status?
I think we're at a, we won't be up for doing a new traffic study until we bring in phase five, when we're entitling in phase five will be the next point of we're hitting an entitlement number where a new traffic study will occur.
What, when was your last traffic study?
I didn't bring that. I don't have that date with me, but I can get it for you.
Mike, do you know?
I don't, I don't have the date.
So.
Been a while, been a while.
It's been a while. When, uh.
I heard '06, I don't.
We're getting to the point where another one, yeah, the next big phase, no question.
It's only good. They're generally only good for 10 years, correct?
I think, yeah.
Yeah. So.
Depends on what purpose you're putting them to, but yeah, things change, obviously.
Well, and I mean, I guess I'm trying to get a bearing on how, how much has Serenby changed since the last, since we last asked any questions about its traffic? I mean, I, and I asked, I asked this as, as somebody who's, I mean, I, I passed a guy going top speed in a golf cart with a two-year-old in front of you. Yeah, the nine. What? What do we know? If, if no study's done, what do we know? Or whenever, nobody knows when the study was done here. But what do we know about Serenby's traffic? And I'm asking because, again, again, not just the 26 and the implications for crossing that road. I mean, we, we can't isolate it to the residents themselves. So we also got the other density issues. And, and another thing that maybe stems off of that, that, that led me to think about in the first place is the use of that 200 acres. The truth, the issue of trails, which everybody's been talking about and so on, and what, you know, what do we know about how Serenby residents use the, the land, the trails, the roads? As I started to try and, you know, do my due diligence, what I found is I don't know anything and I can't find out. So I'm asking.
Right. I don't think, we don't study the trails. Right, I don't think, we don't study the trails, I don't know of any, any place that does. What I would say, what I would, what I would say about the traffic, I guess the, the two small pieces I feel like I can address. Um, twenty six cars, um, added to that segment of Hutcheson Ferry Road, um, is not, sorry, twenty six, uh, dwellings added to that. If it was, um, generating traffic at the full, you know, with the I T E, there's, you know, roughly ten trips a day, right? With no, um, uh, no reduction for people who just are walking into Saranby, pretty far. I don't know how many will actually walk into Saranby, right? It's pretty separate from things, but ten a day, that's about two hundred and, two hundred and sixty cars you'd get on that section of Hutcheson Ferry. I don't have the actual number, I looked it up recently, I think they're about eight, eight hundred trips a day on that segment of road. So you're still talking about somewhere around a thousand. That is, that is miles away from anything that needs any sort of traffic improvements. Um, you, you know, you're talking about over, somewhere over ten thousand before you need to be thinking about intersection improvements, traffic improvements on, on any road. So it's, it's nowhere close.
Okay, but then what would that expand to if that hundred and seventy, with that hundred and seventy four landing in an already dense node in Saranby?
Right, 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 it would have, right, it would have impact and that, that probably would, would need to be studied. Um, the, um, right, so I was right, only talking about that, that portion of Hutcheson Ferry Road. Um, they'll have to come in and say, you can't do the study unless you know where things are, right? The traffic study has to say, okay, this is where the units are, this is where the traffic is originating, so they're going to be going out this exit. They're going to be going to these destinations, that's how traffic studies work. If you don't have a location for those units, you can't do the study.
So as long as you don't know where these hundred and seventy four are, you can endlessly defer a traffic study, is that what you're saying?
But when you want to, right, when you wanted.
I think what they're saying is that when we bring the hundred and seventy four forward, if that, if we're crossing a threshold that a traffic study is needed before landing those hundred and seventy four, there can be a traffic study to say, this is where, we can't, by having the right to do a hundred and seventy four, we can't just do it without coming before this body. So it still has to come back before, back through the process.
Sure, but what do we know now? And what do we, again, what?
The threshold?
No, no, not the, I mean, I'm sure a threshold will be triggered, it sounds like at some point, but.
Probably when these hundred and seventy.
Right, it's gonna, yeah, it's, it's.
The next thing that gets drawn, probably.
Well, I, I guess I'm asked, a part of what gets me is, is the, like, during the P Z B meeting, the number four trips came up somehow. What was that based on?
That's the current traffic studies, what they show as the actual usage of current Saranby hamlet. That.
My question.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's, it's, the four is what the, and I mean, there, there's detail behind this, but the four is the, just under four is the current usage per house in Saranby. And that includes the Insta part drivers coming in and the tourists coming to the restaurants and all of that. And that's what you expect in mixed use, you expect much lower utilization in mixed use because people can get needs met internally, not having to drive out to everything. And so that's where that number comes from.
Right, but when, but when does that, I guess, the, I mean, that idea of the trips, when post pandemic, the volume of, of goods and services on delivery has, has radically increased.
Right.
And.
This is recent studies.
What is the recent study?
It says four.
What?
It says four.
But when?
I, that I don't know.
I want to say it was like oh six.
I just, I just heard, nobody knows, and then I just heard recent, but when was the study?
I'd have to, I'd have to get the document.
And that's, can I say something real quick? I, I, and one of my concerns is, you know, traffic studies have been kind of a hot issue lately. One thing you learn when you, when you get a traffic study or an N O D, is you realize how far and wide they actually pass this thing out. And not only give it to us, they give it to all the surrounding cities. Jack Hill's investment, they, they give it to everybody. I called to get an explanation on that, they were pretty clear about it. They said, well, we have a development that's gonna have, you know, thirty, forty, fifty thousand people in it. It's going to be a construction zone for ten years based upon the current traffic patterns and every, that the reason this, this thing gets spread out that far is exactly what was in ours, found out that there were twenty six roads that needed changed. So, uh, I, I would agree with, with Scott, I don't, I don't know what, where, where exactly his, his train of thought was. My train of thought is, if, if, um, traffic study needs to be done on Saranby because it hasn't been done and we know it's been over ten years and we know the amount of traffic on that side of the city. Um, I think one probably does need to be done, uh, to make sure that we don't have to widen somebody else's yard or do this or whatever, before we get on down the road, we, we, we're way on down the road from a traffic study. Regardless of if we know the date or not, we know they're only good for ten years. So, and we know the complaints coming out of Saranby is really about parking, it's very congested right there, whatever, um, it is what it is. But, uh, you know, those citizens deserve to know how this thing is going to lay out, they need some accurate numbers. Um, just like when we had the movie studio, I'll never forget, uh, Carl Westmoreland standing up here. We were asking a very simple question about the number. And, uh, you know, I, I gave him the benefit of the doubt, I figured, hey, maybe he's confused about what the public's asking. And I brought, I was sitting right over here and I brought him over there and I said, Carl, this is the number they're asking for. He went up there, cut that number in half, then we had a citizen read us the same, the, the accurate numbers, you happen to have a copy of everything. What we're trying to get to is real numbers, not assumptions, you know? And that, that, that kind of irritated me because we had a traffic study, somebody paid for that traffic study. And then somebody felt based upon their knowledge, they just cut it in half, but because they had a phone call with Trilla. That's, that's, that's how that one went down. And he explained that because of his knowledge and talking to people, Trilla. And, um, but yeah, I find, you know, it's like the road pavement, you know, who would have ever thought, you know, you sit up here long enough, you'll figure out more about roads than you thought you would ever need to know, which is true. But one thing about a traffic study, it is very enlightening how much information is in it and how far and wide they share it. And, um, yeah, I would be interested to see what that looks like too, because Saranby is getting very, very large. Um, there is no limit on a hamlet, I don't know how we missed that one somehow. Uh, that is a big concern, running across the street like that. And, um, I think there are some things that need to be put in the check, I've looked at that piece of property, there's a lot of streams back there, a lot of creeks. It probably does need a little in, investigation on it, you know, because that's something that I, I think we need to dig into more.
It's required, but.
What are the, what are the, um.
That's required, right, Mike, that has to be done anyway.
There's a site analysis.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Back in, I was about thirteen years old, this goes back to that property. Me and dad hopped on three-wheelers and started across from the tower, all the way back to where he grew up. And then I did it again a few weeks ago with my son in four-wheelers. And we started right across from the tower and believe it or not, some of those same trails are there. They're hunting trails and some go right by George Brown's property, close to Jacob and Stacy's property and right by Arthur's property. The trails are right there and it's beautiful, they're creeks, hardwoods and some of those hardwoods are really old and big. It's exciting to see that that's going to be protected, that the, the drive from Piney Woods Church Road to Sardis Church Road is pretty much going to be locked in and unchanged, especially right there at Watkins down to Sardis. Because it's permanently protected, you're going to see zero change, it's buffered, twenty six cars pulling out. They have more people go to church on Sardis on, every Sunday than twenty six cars. You're not going to notice that traffic, but it's going to be protected. And you know, as far as hamlet size, the pro to no hamlet size, when it grows another two hundred acres, you're saving that two hundred, you're saving seventy percent of that or more if you put those T D Rs somewhere else. And you know, that two hundred acres with two hundred cars coming out on Hutcheson Ferry, that would be very different than twenty six. And the regular Saranby where you have road furnished at Tomley Cook, dump on Tomley Cook, Shell Road at about four different places. Hutcheson Ferry Road, there's other places for that density to go. And there is traffic and I'm not qualified to know when traffic studies, but aren't there set numbers that kick off traffic studies?
Y- yes, there, the, the, the city's threshold is half the D R I threshold, the state has the D R I threshold.
So there's thresholds, when we meet those thresholds, we don't ignore them, we kick off, there's a traffic study, right?
Yeah, and it's, it's right, we're, we're, we're basically there, the next, really, it's the next thing.
The pros I see to that is that property is protected, it's a beautiful property. And it's going to be minimal impact with twenty six acres.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna protect some property, I get that, but, but it's not protected till it's on a sheet of paper, it's just been talked about. That's all, that's, that's, that's my point.
We can't develop the seventy percent, right?
We're, we're chasing preservation is what we're doing.
But we're, we're doing it correctly.
And the last time we got some, the council had to say no more annexation of land. And now, fast forward ten years later, pretty much the same question, got twelve hundred acres, you got a hundred and thirteen in preservation, that, that's your real number.
No, it's not, it's not really, it's not the real number.
Okay, well then, well then I'll finish then, well then, well then, if that's not the real number, how come I've been sitting here asking for that information in that sheet of paper? And Garnie just said she got three hundred in a process, or what, three hundred and some change, is that right? In a process. But excuse me, but that's not already preserved.
I, I don't see how you can say we're not protecting seventy percent of whatever that number is. It's seventy percent, you're not going to burn it, you're not going to get a permit for it.
Okay.
Does that, is that clear?
No, but this has been a fundamental misunderstanding.
A lot is not clear, Rodney.
It's seventy percent.
Simple math, was twelve hundred and thirteen.
Pull it up, seventy percent of a thousand acres is how much?
Seven hundred.
That's, that's what's protected when you annex, seventy thirty.
You got a hundred and thirteen. Until I see a sheet of paper that says otherwise.
That's not true, that's very misleading.
I was told we don't control the project, then I saw a sheet of paper. Until I see a sheet of paper that says otherwise, um, that's what I've got to go with.
That's misinformation.
It's misinformation.
Do we have anything in place that say that every ten years that we have to have a traffic study? Are, are they aware of that? Do we have anything in place?
That's not how it works, how it works is if you have a traffic study on a project that says, you know, you're doing four hundred and then you come in and do more fifteen years later, right? It's not necessarily covered on that initial traffic study. But we know here with the thresholds, right, they're, they're working under their original traffic study. This next threshold, we know, right, the next big piece that comes in needs a traffic study, we're talking about it a lot, we've been talking about with the peers, everybody knows. Um, but you don't, it, it's like an existing subdivision, doesn't go in every ten years, Crossroads doesn't go every ten years and update their traffic study, that's not how it works.
It's built out. It's built out. I'm gonna get a traffic study on that.
And so the other piece of this is, there have been other traffic studies done, or other traffic studies working for other projects, right? And as a part of that, they, they look at the traffic that's being created all around. And that four trip, under four trip per household in Saranby, or came out of some of those. I don't know exactly one, but I will find it for people, because these are all actual documented things. And, you know, when somebody asks in a meeting, well, where is it? I mean, not like we're carrying these things around in our pockets, right? Absolutely, we'll get it for people, show it to them. And, and I reckon, trust is low here, shouldn't be, because that is just the fact. This particular thing, twenty seven units, whatever it is, is way below any threshold for any traffic study, right? And, and again, whatever the number is, to Rodney's point, more people come out of church in thirty minutes on Sunday morning, they come out of this thing.
Right, but, but that's, that's kind of a look over here kind of thing, it's kind of like, uh, I put that in the same category as the, of scaremongering about how bad it could be. We're talking about this, this now, and what's that?
Go on.
We're talking about this now and this now isn't just twenty six, it's also a hundred and seventy four.
Which will need a traffic study.
But, but not today, and yet today, because.
And it'll trigger, right, what's, when it's appropriate.
Right, but, but how has that, you know, how, we're, we're talking about the pub, the public safety and well-being of a significant portion of our population in this city, who, and we haven't.
We're doing so well.
We got this far, um.
Scott, if I may, another way to think about it, because I understand that it is complex and confusing. By bringing this forward in the way that we are of showing that we're landing twenty six and we're not landing two hundred, we are cementing in a plan and guaranteeing to the city that there will only be twenty six units here so that the city can make infrastructure plans for this section of Hutcheson Ferry to only have twenty six homes and not have to think about a forward plan, infrastructure plan where a developer would land two hundred. And when we bring forward this hundred and seventy four that literally live in the air doesn't mean that everyone today, we don't even know where they'll land. When we do, we'll then have to think about the infrastructure plan around where those exist. But what this is saying for the city today is that Darryl and Robbie can make an infrastructure plan for Hutcheson Ferry knowing that in perpetuity, there will only be twenty six, not two hundred. So that it's a different way to think about it.
Okay, but the, but with, with regard to infrastructure plan, I mean, I mean, when was the last infrastructure plan for Saranby? When was the last checkup? I mean, and, and Mike, in the P Z B meeting last, last month gave a textbook description of how by acquiring things piecemeal over time, Saranby hasn't had to, you know, hasn't, we're, we're, we're talking about triggering thresholds and stuff. There, 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 this, pardon me, the, the, I'm trying to, I'm trying to this thing to wail on me. Uh, the infrastructure, uh, that you're talking about, like, what do we know about it? We're talking about a hundred and seventy four more units on two densely developed, I, I, I drove up as part of this, I drove, I did a bunch of driving around Saranby. I drove up to that place with the crenellated curbs and the, all the pipes sticking out of the ground. It's over a mile and a half of just linear development. And, and it's a lot of people, it's a lot of cars. And I, my, my first thought looking at the, at that was, do we have, the, the, this, I'm sure Greg knows, because Greg's so on top of things, but I, one UPS truck could keep any fire safety equipment from getting up there. Do we know what the water's like for fire control? What do, all, all of these things, when you say infrastructure, I keep thinking about not look over here at this beautiful twenty six acres that'll never change and all feel great and so on, but a hundred and seventy four. And I kept, like, as, as, in trying to figure out what that, how that plays in this application, it just keeps engendering more and more unknowns. More and more things that I feel like we don't really know here. We talk, we're talking about thresholds for studies, was studies, when, when were they? And, and, and when were they? And, uh, and when? When were they and what was Saranby when they, it was studied and what is it now?
So just specifically, right, about the area that you drove through? When that plan came through, there was a traffic study done, that traffic study, not a D R I, not a full-on D R I, but that traffic study led to some of the conditions that we worked with, with Kuwaita County on traffic improvements that are being made as conditions of our zoning because of that exact concern, right? So down there, the, that weird turn lane thing that was added and all of that was based on the very thing that you're talking, very concern that you've got. There's an ongoing conversation right now with the fire department about what kind of water lines need to be put in before construction starts down there to make sure that we have good fire flow, right? So that's absolutely a concern, absolutely an issue. We haven't hit a D R I threshold, we all agree that we're, we're probably overdue, but we need the very next thing that comes in, gets a D R I. This isn't it, it's the next thing with some density, right? The next thing that, that hits that kind of a threshold. But it's not that these conversations haven't been happening apace the whole time through. And we have conditions of zoning in these rezonings that are responsive to those things. And, and again, you see stuff happening on the ground that's responsive to those things. The whole conversation about the other annexation, right, right now, that's a big conversation about what the traffic shows and what intersection improvements need to be made at Shell Road and Tommy Lee Cook. That's an ongoing conversation based on those traffic studies. Happy to get somebody in to talk us through those, if you'd like, that, that was something that happened when those were zoned.
Right, but that, that still doesn't, I guess to me, it still doesn't suggest that we, like, I, I keep hearing, well, we'll know later. Like, like, I feel like I'm kind of, I'm, I feel like we're kind of being asked, I mean, I, I have got other things that, that, uh, bug me about the topic. When I really started looking at it, but, uh, but, uh, I feel like we're being asked to, you know, ignore a bunch of open questions that are implied, that are implicated directly in this. you know, ignore a bunch of open questions that are implied, that are implicated directly in this through the transfer of density and so on. And we don't really know about the traffic. We, we've, we've seen, we, we, Mike explained that, well, you know, there's been these little, you know, additions to Saranby that, that none of which has attracted what should be, it seems to me, on a fifteen hundred odd acre development with its density issues, its traffic. I mean, driving through there, I couldn't believe I got stuck at, uh, that restaurant down in not a neighborhood, also. Uh, when, when the school was letting out, and I kept thinking, what happens when there's that senior thing? And there's a hotel back on the other side of it. And we, and I feel like we don't, it's that, it's that, well, we'll find out.
No, 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 but we do. For example, right? Just around that, there were conditions of zoning put on the senior thing that required another access behind, right? So that there is an additional emergency access if for some reason that, that road gets blocked. I mean, there's, there's a lot of this stuff, and I get that, you know, all of our rezonings have so many conditions and all of that, and there's some that, that we think about maybe and some that we don't, but it's absolutely included. The, the point that you're making about this hundred and seventy eight that's moving somewhere and we don't know where and how can we do anything? We don't even know where it's ending up. We will, before it lands anywhere, and we will have the opportunity to add the conditions and it will trigger probably the DRI. So, I mean, that's not relevant to this, those.
Well, except that, except that it's a, it's a future thing that might happen, that will happen, but I'm, but we don't, but, but it feels like we also don't know where we are on this. The more I, the more I look, and I mean, the sewer there is the worst kept secret in
And, and how does that include these twenty seven homes?
Because it's not, again, it isn't just these, it's like we're being asked, look at these twenty seven homes in the beautiful woods with the, you know, they're only going to order so much Amazon or whatever, but the, but it's the, it's the, it's the implication that goes with it, which is that it, it comes automatically with this huge number of building rights that, that feel like, as, as the advocate said, in, they are just in the air.
They can't be used until you approve it.
Right, but the, but, and what I'm saying is that, is not knowing these things, it just feels like unknowns upon known.
But you do know that. They can't be used until you approve it and we do all those things. We do those things every time.
Have all the things that need to be done been done?
This, this is, this is what, what the, uh, GMA says, local municipalities may request a transportation impact study if a development is projected to cause one hundred or more additional peak hour trips since its conception. So I would imagine we far surpass that.
But we've done it between.
And my biggest fear is
But is it a study that addresses the aggregate or is it, are these little tiny traffic studies? I'm sorry, Richie, go ahead.
No, I'm just saying, I understand that we, we've done traffic studies. I get that. The fact is, you know, and, and my information could be wrong, but I understand it was oh five or oh six. That's the case or anywhere around there. That's, uh, that's not the case. So why don't you tell us the, the date, Tom? That's what we're asking. When was it?
So we can get the That's the point I'm just making. It happened right around the time that the zoning of the, uh, spell of stuff happened because those traffic counts and that traffic study was used to create the conditions that we put on that rezoning. Again, I don't remember the exact date because I don't
But I mean, that would be within, in the last four or five years.
It would have been, yeah.
That's what you're saying.
That's a hundred percent.
Okay, well, can we see that document? I want to make sure that it doesn't require, um, roads to change. Doesn't require roundabouts, everything else that just outside of Saranby, or that may affect, uh, some of our general population. Because that's what we learned from the last meeting. Learned that, oh my gosh, we got twenty six, six roads there. So I think that is part of doing your due diligence.
Almost, well, no.
So we went from, we went from maybe this document's fifteen years old, that we had one four or five years ago.
No, it's a DRI. No, but this is, again, this is what you do all the time. There are two different things that we're talking about. There's a DRI, and then there are traffic studies. Traffic studies are a part of a DRI, but there are interim ones of those done, right? There was a traffic study done, conditions of zoning that we voted on in here, were placed upon the spell of development. Some of that stuff has already been done. If you drive down Tommy Lee Cook, you can see the results of it, right? And so, yes, we did look at it at that time. Most of those impacts, as I recall, were on Tommy Lee Cook Road because this subdivision, this part of the subdivision is down in Kuwaita County. As one might expect, the impacts are down there, and that's where most of the changes were made. And we also recognize that we're getting close to needing a full-on DRI, right? And that may include changes on other roads. We also know, I think people know, or at least they should, that DRIs happen around us all the time. Right? Every time there's a huge warehouse, every time there's whatever, give input on what's happening in our city. They total it all up and they make recommendations all around us. It's like the Palmetto DRI. There, there are so many of those that all factors in. Ours are just a small piece of what's going on in the background that they consider for those, right?
I'm, I'm not arguing that. I'm just, I'd just like to see the document, make sure there's no residents outside of the hamlet that'll be affected.
We can get you the
So I mean, we've made some headway. We went from fifteen years ago to four or five years ago, so we should have an accurate sheet of paper to, to look at.
You, you had it when you voted for the spell of thing. It was in that spell of thing.
Okay.
I mean, it was.
I, I, I tell you, there's a lot of stuff I was supposed to have and then citizens find it, so go figure. So is that possible to get, get our hands on another one of those documents that we've obviously, that I, I misplaced?
These, the traffic study related to the spella and the improvements to Tommy Lee Cook, yeah, we should be able to get a hold of it.
Good. Thank you. That's the concern of a lot of citizens outside of the hamlet. They want to make sure they're not, you know, surprised. I don't blame them.
And do we, have we heard any concerns from residents within the hamlet? Application says Saranby speaks for Saranby, but that leaves us out of voice of the people who live in
For the, um, for the, for the expansion. Um, no, but that's what the public hearings are for.
It's pretty far away from where most of the people in Saranby live.
Right, right.
Any
They're probably thinking they'll have some more trails to walk on, and that's a positive.
How far do they have to walk for those trails?
About a mile and a half, not even, but it's all within that walkability, mile and a half corridor.
Well, that, I, it, it's another issue that I thought, you know, when I looked at the proposal, I mean, it's got inconsistencies in it. Some I didn't understand, like the, the obsolete letterhead and stuff like that, but also, uh,
What was it? Obsolete letterhead?
Yes.
From where?
It, it refers to my predecessor, not, not the current sitting D three, and so
Anyway, I'm confused. Sorry.
Yeah, but the, but the, it also says that it both harmonizes and doesn't harmonize with the UDC and, and, and comp plan, but we're always told and we were engaged recently until last meeting with, uh, effort to uh, bring those things into harmonization, but we have walkability issues. How, what, how, what's the, how does that work crossing a major thoroughfare like that? With, to any, and, and who's, yeah, what, can you speak to the walkability issue? It doesn't feel walkable.
Basically the same conversation we had on the last one, the H lots, the other two hundred acres, right? It's this, um, less dense, uh, version of the hamlet. Um, and the, uh, co- comprehensive plan envisions what we all think of as hamlet, right? What's Saranby, what most of Saranby is. And, um, this is a, a different character. Um, and yeah, it's hard to argue that it's walkable. They've added the paths, which are, which are lovely. Um, uh, well, I haven't seen them. I'm sorry. I'm imagining them to be lovely. Um, uh, but, uh, uh, that is, um, yeah, I think, I, I think that that's a, uh, an important judgment call. Last time we had a, um, a condition from the planning commission and the H lots, you know, asking city council to sort of clarify what's meant by, and I don't have the language, but the, um, that basically that walkability, um, that walkability question, my response back to them this time was that, um, we didn't get any language from plan, from city council on, on what that means, but they did approve the rezoning, um, which I think, um, can be read, but that's, that's, yeah, you, you all's judgment.
Why didn't we provide any language if our, if our advisor, advisory board asked for it?
I don't. I don't know.
Who's responsibility is it?
It was recommendations from the
Right, right. It was, um, yeah, seeking clarification from the city council.
I don't think they heard it.
The, the planning and zoning indicated that, that the city council should provide, uh, what, what is it?
Guidance on I don't have the language in front of me. It was a clarification on, on the application of the term in the, in the, uh, in the, actually, you know what? I might have, let me see if I quoted it here. I might have the, I might, might have the term. I don't have the actual condition, but I may have quoted the, uh, comp plan language in here somewhere that they pulled out, because this is so, so similar to that last one. Development should be tightly clustered on the property, providing a clear demarcation between development and preserved open space. So the demarcation, we've actually added, we've got it in the code. We also added as a condition that's sort of belt and suspenders there. So tightly, I think tightly clustered maybe was the, the terminology. They have met the clustering requirements in the UDC, which was an attempt to codify what it says in the, um, in the comp, comp plan when it talks about tightly clustered. But the only requirement in the UDC is that, um, almost all the lots, ninety eight percent, have to be in clusters of at least three or they're touching or right across the street from each other. And, um, they have absolutely met that in this, in this plan. And so I think that that's the, that's the question. Does it, does it meet the, um, the language in the comp plan? It meets the way we implemented the language in the comp plan. Um, but when you read the comp plan and think about all the, you know, what, what people think of as the sort of platonic ideal of a hamlet, this is a little different than that. Um, but that
More like pharma meds.
Right.
And, and as, as we have implemented the zoning, as the council has voted for as the law of the city, this is allowed, so that, that was the interpretation of the council when they voted for the zoning.
Well, I think, I think also too, you know, it, it's pretty clear. If we want to order a traffic study, we can. Um, so that's, that's my main concern after the, um, studying that I've been doing stuff is I want to make sure that we're not adding, you know, putting some other owner at risk due to the amount of cars that are coming. And when you talk to the DOT, um, I said, there, there's a reason why they give it to all the municipalities around you, everything. Because he made it pretty clear. You, you can, you can think maybe you know where cars come from. You don't unless you stand out there on the road and see exactly where the cars come from. So how they do their math equation is kind of mind boggling. Um, but the way they do it is so that, you know, everybody within that ten, fifteen mile radius knows. And, um, I think it's, it's more than warranted. I know since I've been up here, I'm, I remember back when, uh, I think about two hundred, two hundred houses in there. Now we're sitting on about eleven hundred. And with the current ways that you drive through there, you know, uh, be quite honest with you, a lot of people in Saranby feel a little underrepresented right now. Um, because they want to see some of this stuff get turned out. They want to know what are the plans? I've talked to people who, you know, purchased a home and thought there'd be nothing over here. And next thing you know, there's something over there. Now, which that has nothing to do with me. That's just somebody moving into an area. But, um, regardless of that, the traffic study is very important because all our roads are two-lane roads. And I'm, um, you know, and, and another big thing is, you know, this hamlet size. I think we need to have a conversation about that next month. You could put that on the docket. That's why I'd appreciate that because of, uh, you know, you're over village size now. I mean, what do we need to do? Turn this into a village or whatever? Who knows? But, uh, a lot of citizens are concerned, uh, just thinking you're just going to walk clean across the city. And, uh, they want to know where, when does it stop? Does it ever stop? Where's the line? And also, um, you know, that's, that's my thing. I hear people, you know, you want to argue with me about preservation, this, that, or whatever. But, uh, anything you learn over time, working for yourself, dealing with real estate, always company. But I have the sheet of paper that, um, tells you what you can and cannot do. Unfortunately, information is what it is, but, um, you know, until I see a sheet of paper that brings that gap a little bit closer, um, and that's what you got. You've got a conversation, my preservation. So that's, that, that's where I'm at on this. And, um, that's all I got to say about that.
Is there, is there any way to catalog and track this against previous preservation claims for Saranby? Do we have a central catalog of the preservation, what's been put in preservation?
Yes.
The, yes, we have copies of the
Seventy percent of it is protected.
Beyond the numbers though.
There is, there's a conservation easement map.
And how, and how much of it is in conservation?
Hmm, I hadn't seen the latest map. It was a hundred something.
Can see
Already under easement, it has a hundred and eighteen or so acres, something like that. And they have, I've got a map of the next group that's coming in. And we have, yeah, we, we are, um, all the easements have to be approved by the city. We have the right to enforce them. Um, and so, yeah, we have copies of all the easements with the, you know, the parcels that they cover. But there are a lot of separate parcels, a lot of separate, well, not a lot, I mean, dozen, couple dozen, something like that. But yeah, we have copies of all that.
Is there a rush on this? Uh, it feels like we could know way more and make a much more informed decision soon.
I, I, I don't have a rush on it. I mean, it's regular
For what, for what?
Mike.
All these unknowns about what
Twenty six houses?
Yeah. Again, you keep saying twenty six houses. I keep saying a hundred and seventy four. And it's, and it's implications for health and public safety. The public welfare is our responsibility.
That'll trigger
A hundred and seventy four aren't being put anywhere.
Right.
They never chose to use them. Like, we don't know that.
Oh, well, in that case, not knowing that, let's vote on this. I mean, that's not our responsibility. Our responsibility is to know.
But it will trigger a DRI. I've some, we've talked about, we've been talking about that, if, if needed.
Said it's probably over.
But what we, what we know is that those hundred and seventy four aren't being used anywhere yet. And that we can't do a DRI based on knowing that possibly a hundred and seventy four might be used somewhere. Because to Mike's point, you have to know where and how they're going to be used. That's it.
And so saying, I said, well, then what do we know?
You, you can, you can trigger your own traffic study. You, a DRI is a different animal, but, but you, you as a municipality can ask for that.
Until they get mapped, they can't be used. So the answer right now is they can't be used.
Right.
That's the short term.
I, I, I understand that. Um, but, but I also feel like we, we just don't know. We don't know where we are. I'm, I just can't get over the amount of traffic and the implications of the traffic. We've, we're adding hundreds and hundreds of, of units of density on little, they're very cute. But I would hate to drive a fire truck through on those roads and especially when a Amazon truck is there. And so I, you know, I'm just, I'm, that's silly, uh, not silly. It's a practical view of it, but the, but it, it raises this question of like, what do, what do we know about the current density? What was done to, to, like, for, just as a, for example, if the study that tells us, oh, there's only four trips in Saranby. If that study's pre-pandemic, throw it out the window. It doesn't mean anything compared to the level of goods and services. To say nothing of the perpetual construction traffic and trades traffic that, that obviously is part of this and that I encounter even as somebody who doesn't live there. And so, so I'm, so I, I'm just wanting to know what we know. And I keep hearing, we will know.
Well, as far as fire goes, Chief Brett, and, uh, I don't know how many times you've done your drive-through where you we've, they, they've done that, where they make sure that they can make the turns and the roads are appropriate prior to to new roads being put in and even making changes on current roads. And, and they've marked recently fire lanes to make sure that that can happen. And that, so that you can be towed if you are parked in a fire lane. So there have definitely been some attention to that. I know that in the last two years, for sure, you've been active.
That, we added a ton of conditions to the hotel rezoning, or the hotel, uh, use permit, for example, that were around those kinds of issues. I mean, actually, there's been a ton of work around that.
Well, I mean, at, at the end of the day, if we want those answers, all we have to do is ask the developer to do a study. That's all we have to do. Because, uh, it says very clearly, you overdo a hundred trips per day during the busy hours from the last time you had one done. Um, that's what generally triggers them for municipalities. They want to know. Because the last thing you want to do is have the DOT come down here and tell you what you're going to do. And in that particular, you know, asking for forgiveness versus admission, that, that, that could harm the citizen. And I want to make sure that that does not happen. And I don't think that's a lot to ask at all. As you've gone, I mean, I've been up here a good while, and I mean, I remember As you've gone, I mean, I've been up here a good while and I mean, I remember when it was, you know, about two, two hundred and fifty, we're sitting at eleven hundred. And what we do know is that, that one hasn't been done. And what we do know is that we've heard over the years, you know, a lot of folks, you know, talking about Hutchinson Ferry, it's dangerous. You know, and it's getting rougher. I go that way to Palmetto sometimes and it, it is a lot busier road. And, um, I think it's well warranted. I don't think it's out of line to ask for it. And I think it helps put the information on the table that we need. Just like, uh, discussing this hamlet size, just like, uh, discussion, you know, a lot of people are concerned about, you know, like I said, dog walking up the whole left side of the city. Uh, well, I think as a council, we need to decide, um, regardless if it's a village, hamlet, whatever it may be. But, but there needs to be a line in the sand. You're going to do a two hundred acre hamlet, there's your hamlet. You want to do a four hundred acre hamlet? You know what? Apply with your four hundred acres. Don't run around town trying to scarf up everybody. And, uh, which I mean, is legal, you can try to do that, but what we have here is, is the way I see it with the preservation, we, we, we moved the goalposts. And, and Mike, if you'll bring in that map next month, we have that map, that'd be great. It shows Saranby, it shows, hey, this is, this in purple is already preserved in ink. This right here in blue is, uh, something we're working on. We've got paperwork over here with somebody, so we can get down to the nitty gritty of what is preserved, what's not preserved, what is in conservation, what's not. Cause all I ever hear is it's on the way and it's on the way. It's been a decade.
You've, you've said that about ten times today. Look, we have a, a current law in our city, our responsibility.
Hopefully it gets through.
Unelected body is to follow the law of the city and to look at projects against the law of the city. It's not to decide, we don't like the law of the city and just pretend that we're doing something different. We want to change the law, change the law, right? Comp plan process drives changes to the zoning. We've got a comp plan update starting next year. Perfect time to talk about whatever we don't like about the zoning. Right now we've got an application that's in under our current zoning today. And let's stick to that today if we can. Does anybody have any other questions about how this fits with our current zoning?
The traffic study will tell us if it does.
Okay.
And maybe an infrastructure checkup.
So I've got a question for Mike real quick. We're talking about twenty six homes, right? Does that, what is, is there a way the growth of a hamlet turns it into a village? Is that zone, is that possible?
It would have to be rezoned.
So it's no way the size of a hamlet could be a village. So you remember you said that a minute ago, so I wanted to make sure that's clear.
Know what I said, so you're clear. You, you, you do this a lot, right?
Okay, well, let's hear it.
Was there needs to be a limit to the size of a hamlet. Right now there is not.
I thought you said, you're approaching the size of a village. So you had it on YouTube, so just to set that straight, I'm not going to talk over you. Just to set that straight. So there is no misinformation, right? We're trying to make sure this is crystal clear.
Hey, we're going to go.
A village is differently zoned than a hamlet. A hamlet to the size of the hamlet is different than that village in many ways, in many ways. Okay, so there is no crossover there. It doesn't grow to a village based on size. And it's confusing to me. I know it's confusing to other people. So now it's not as confusing.
But, but, but that, that too raises that question of, of infrastructure. It, it, it was originally set up, how, how big was Saranby originally? From the county?
As it annexes it grows. From the county, it was about four hundred and thirty two acres, give or take four twenty six when we became a city, something like that. Four, four twenty six, I think, when we became a city.
Okay. And, and now it's how many?
Uh, somewhere around twelve hundred.
Is it, how, how does it serve? What, like, how, how? Well, for example, this, uh, sewer that coming down, that, you know, that came down the road and into there recently. Does, does that take care of all that? Like, does, does it, like?
The sewer was designed.
How big can it expand on that?
The sewer is designed to take everything that Saranby could possibly be and everything else that's in that whole area that's possibly developable.
Okay.
So like if every, every, including all the land that Saranby doesn't own, that could be consolidated if thirty landowners got together and made a hamlet, whatever. It includes the capacity for everything that was within the reach of that one. Between it and the next one.
Are they hooked up to it?
Sorry?
Do they, are they hooked up to it?
Not hooked up to it. Our zoning says that if public sewer is available, that you have to connect to it. So they have the ability to expand their plant, but the new stuff in Spella is going to have to hook up to the sewer. Assuming that Fulton County gets it operating, which is right around the corner. They can do it without it, but they're going to have to hook up to the public sewer if it's available.
So they, they can increase densities on their, how does their current sewer handle it? This, the, I mean, they're like three times the size now.
Yeah, and it's, it's regulated by E P D. And E P D comes in and looks at how many houses are hooked up and tells them what they need to do to stay ahead of the usage.
When did E P D last?
Month of reports on the flows, E P D has monthly reports on the flows into that, into their, their plant to make sure they're within their license.
It's, it's the same way that if somebody gets a septic permit in Chattahoochee Hills, it's, it's not our job to do that. The Fulton County, uh, does that. E P D controls their public private sewer system. And we know they do because they tell us about it, but they control that. We don't.
What do they, what do they say about it?
They say that it's fine. They say that they're making the increase, their, the increases in capacity that they need to keep up. Now, there's a question I'm sure for them as to whether they need to make another increase in capacity or whether they are ready to hook up to Fulton County. Fulton County is supposed to be going live within the next month. So, uh, this next phase would hook up to that. But they could expand their system again if they had to.
Is that what you plan to do?
Connect to the Fulton County sewer once it's available, but you couldn't connect to it. It's not operational right now. It will be soon, but it's not today operational, yeah.
And water, like wat- water provision for public safety. I'm thinking of that member Palmetto had that thing where they couldn't provide enough water to put fires out.
We're, we're at a point right now where there's going to have to be additional water connectivity uh, before they can get too far into the Spella, uh, project just because of the two things. You need water flow from two directions. And certain amount of volume and pressure. And that conversation is ongoing as well. In fact, we met with, uh, Kuwaita County because we're working on service delivery strategy with them to talk about how and where we hook into the line that's on Shell Road and all that, all also ongoing. And has to be done before anybody gets a C O for any of those houses. So, you know, there, there's more impetus on the developer to get that sorted out than there is in the city because build a house without the ability to connect, connect. But yes, that's all ongoing as it, as it has been from the beginning. These conversations are ongoing conversations around these developments from the.
I can hold my other officer to the meeting.
Are we, I mean, so I am never going to rush this city council. I'm not. But it is ten minutes to six and we have gotten through the first item of the agenda review. And we've got seven or eight more items on our work session agenda. So I'm just putting that out there. Do we want to keep talking about this? Do we want to move on to the next item on the agenda?
With mayor council, would it be possible, and I'll defer to the attorney, if, could we, cause with the public does start at six, that council meeting starts at six, people are going to be wanting to get on Zoom and that kind of stuff and they're going to be wondering why, why can't I log in? Is it possible we can talk about the work session items at the end of the council meeting and still be on time with the council meeting? Is that a possibility to do that? So that way we, 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 we'll start the meeting.
But the whole point of the agenda review is going through and talking about the agenda before the council meeting.
I was stoning up this as an offer. There is an agenda item, ladies and gentlemen, um, in your packet, number twenty four oh six one. Have y'all seen that one about, um, council consideration approved amendment to an I G A between the city and Chattahoochee Hills and Kuwaita, Boilin Land and Saranby, and that's regarding transportation improvements. That's further on the agenda and it's a work session item. This speaks directly to the traffic study you guys have been talking about that Kuwaita did with the Spella development. And it talks, and we're, we're only in it because it's part of the city Chattahoochee Hills, but this agreement is between Kuwaita and Saranby. And Saranby's got to pay, uh, five hundred eighty eight thousand, five ninety seven for traffic improvements based on the traffic study that was done. And it's talking about turn lanes, full depth reclamation, resurfacing, and that's all in this particular item. So it kind of speaks to what you're talking about.
The ones I was talking about.
That's what you're talking about.
Clear, it's a condition of our zoning.
Right.
Saranby paid for the traffic study.
Right.
Because Kuwaita.
So that was done.
You know, yeah, that's, that's one example.
So that's on your agenda tonight.
Rick, what I was going to suggest is because people might be wanting to log on for the council meeting. I mean, we can just turn off that Zoom, turn on the council meeting Zoom and continue on with our work session. Continue on with our work session. Yeah, and, and so my suggestion to council would be, let's get through the agenda review, right? And look at where we are and then look at the items that are on there as work session items and decide which have to be done today and which we might want to punt till next time. And if we want to start the next council meeting a couple of hours earlier, because we've got a lot of items, we should consider that. Does that sound all right? With everybody? All right. So. Robbie, go ahead and do that switch over.